Mr. Mills will not be here. Mr. Cartiffilis?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Magrino?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Ms. Corbion?
Here.
And Conrad Zalapis will not be here tonight.
Moving on to the approval of the September 12th regular meeting minutes. Have any comments?
So, just one comment, three times over. It references approvals of seven to zero, three times over. It should be five to zero because there are seven houses here, but two alternates, and so they won't count in the vote.
Shall we adjust that for motion?
You can.
Yep, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 12th, 2019 meeting minutes with the proposed change of the approvals. We changed to show that all three approvals that night were five to zero.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports and correspondence.
None to note.
Very good. Site plan subdivisions filed for review?
We have two. A simple subdivision called the Florian Plan on Santa Trail, and we have a preliminary plan submittal for a new proposed residential development, 33 or so lots, called Sugar Brook Plan on Sugar Camp Road near the intersection of Brookwood Road. Those are being officially filed for review this evening.
Next is the approval agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda necessary?
No.
Move on to audience comments. We'll open up to any items, any comments from the audience that are for items not on the agenda. Hearing none, moving on to old business. There is none. Moving on to new business. We will be moving on, and I would like to make sure everyone knows that when you go up to speak, just give us your name, who you're associated with, and your address if possible if you're a residential resident. That'll move us on to the planning commission recommendation, preliminary plan Pemberley Manor, Sugar Camp Road.
The Pemberley Manor subdivision, it's on a piece of property located along Sugar Camp Road across from the Recido Horse Farm, the Arabian Horse Farm. It's about a 30-acre piece of land. The developer, Miranda Homes, is proposing 48 new single-family lots. It's in our mixed residential overlay zoning district, so they are proposing two different types of single-family housing, kind of your standard single-family development with some smaller lots that would quote-unquote be sufficient for patio homes. Two new cul-de-sacs proposed as part of the development, Darcy Court and Pemberley Manor. They received modification approval from council on August 12th, 2019 for the Pemberley Court cul-de-sac. It's proposed at 800 feet in length, so they've received modification approval from council for that cul-de-sac length. Like I said, 48 total lots. The houses range in value from $375 to $450 for the patio homes, and then anywhere from $425 to $650,000 for those standard single-family lots. Two stormwater facilities proposed as part of the development, 13 percent open space, and a $1,500 traffic impact fee requirement as part of the building permit approval for each new home. On the screen there is the proposed layout for the development. Six of the proposed lots are actually kind of, they're separate, located directly along Froby Road. Township staff last week went out and looked at the driveway locations for each of these lots along Froby, and we had concerns about two of the lots in terms of site distance along Froby Road. I believe it was these two lots here. We're going to have our traffic engineer go out and verify that appropriate site distance is being met on those two lots. There's some crest and curvature in the road that kind of provides some unique conditions in terms of site distance. Additionally, in regard to site distance, the intersection with Sugar Camp Road, because they have to be 15 foot off the roadway as part of pin dots, intersection site distances, we have some concerns about the berm looking left along Sugar Camp Road. It's relatively high because it kind of screens the view of the substation over here, and because of that berm and the location of the intersection, we're not convinced at this point that you have the ability to see as far left as you need to. Again, our traffic engineer is going to go out and confirm that appropriate site distance is being met before we get on to final plan approval. Like I said, there are two stormwater management facilities proposed in the development. This stormwater management facility here will be capturing the runoff from the six lots around Froby and then the first cul-de-sac here, Darcy Court. This second stormwater facility here will capture the stormwater runoff from the second cul-de-sac as well as the connection into Peterswood Park. That's something I forgot to mention initially. The new connection from Sugar Camp Road will be connecting into Peterswood Park. A portion of that road being construction was part of the modification approval for this cul-de-sac here, for that 800-foot cul-de-sac, but ultimately there will be a roadway connection into the park. Before we get to final plan approval, township staff's going to be looking for a couple of things, some final geotech reports submitted from the applicant, and some additional comments from LSSE and the township sanitary authority approval. Because of the mixed residential overlay, the process is slightly different. They're here for preliminary plan recommendation to council. They'll go to council for preliminary plan approval, then they'll be back to planning commission for final plan recommendation, then back to council for final plan approval. At this point, staff is recommending that the preliminary plan be recommended to council for approval, subject to the 19 conditions listed in our staff report included in your application, which includes a number of things that I discussed tonight, and some more standard conditions that carry through through final plan approval.
Seth, thank you very much. The two comments you had on the driveways for the two homes of Sugar Camp, as well as the site distance, are those identified in the 19 comments? And if so, could you just point those out?
They are. Give me just a second.
I have it. It's condition number?
Number 13.
Yep.
They cover both.
Yep. Number 13 covers both of them.
Got it. Okay, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Yep.
With that, does anyone here present the plan?
My name's Patrick Cooper with Gateway Engineers, and we have met with staff, and we have no issues regarding the comments. We will continue to work with staff to get these resolved. One question regarding, one of the comments was connecting trail from Froby Road to Darcy Court. That was new to me.
I think, Pat, we had originally shown that walking trail along those six lots along Froby Road because their cluster mailbox is here. They originally had gone to their cluster mailbox and then back down to Darcy. We want to reestablish that. I think we had previously shown a walking trail over here, and we made a comment before about removing that trail, and I think it's part of that you also removed this trail over here because we want to establish a walking connection all the way to the cluster mailbox through development and then potentially into the park.
Okay. We're fine with that.
Seth, one question.
Can you just explain, you have a paragraph on stormwater management issues. verbalize it.
Sure.
You want me to take this, Seth?
Yeah.
Stormwater, it leaves the site in two places currently. We have to, post-development, we have to collect it into stormwater basins. We leave it to those same points at rates that are lower than rates where it drains right now. It's pretty standard design.
Are they dry basins or wet basins?
They are dry basins.
And we're not including them for any type of open space or anything else? And we do have adequate?
We have no open space requirements in this project, actually, but they will be part of the open space that the HOA has to maintain.
Traditionally, they would not be included in open space calculation, but because they have no open space requirement, it's part of a previous agreement on the property between the current owner and the township, it next any potential open space requirements for future development. However, they have 13 percent open space, which exceeds the traditional 10 percent requirement, so even if they did.
Net connection, this question's to Seth from Froby Lots to the Lower Road, Lower Cul-de-sac. Will it be behind the lots or will it be more of a sidewalk?
Well, our intention here, so the cluster mailbox for these lots along Froby is located approximately this location. We want to establish a walking trail that comes into the rear end of the cul-de-sac, whatever that needs to be, whatever kind of form that takes, but ultimately getting them potentially all the way up into the park, along the sidewalks, along these new proposed roads into that Peterswood Park parking lot.
Can you orient me which park of Peterswood Park you think's where it's connected to?
Peterswood Park is located back here. So this, right here, you see the stub on this parking lot? I can actually zoom in on that. That would be the future connection of Bernie Road, which comes this direction to Sugar Camp.
Is that backside?
Yes.
Ron Homes is going to grade that entire leg out for the township.
Can you go back to the master, point to that, that little stretch beyond, is it Pemberley Court, the second cul-de-sac?
Yes.
That little stretch right there, as Pat just said, will be, the only obligation that the developer has is to grade that out and get all the necessary permits for that earthwork and any stream crossings. The township will at some point come in, pay to pave it and put sidewalks on it.
But it not necessarily will be open when the neighborhood is approved, right?
It's undecided at this point.
And what about keep if it takes a little time between A and B? What about, you know, keeping it clear and things like that? They're done when they're done.
Yeah, when they grade it.
So that's us to maintain it until it's ready to pave.
Keep it ready to pave.
Hey Seth, condition one mentions a letter from LSSE.
Yep.
Is that summarized in your summary of letters or anything else that you should have included in that letter? I couldn't find it in here. I'll look to see it.
I'll defer to Sean if he thinks there's anything that's sticking out. We gave the letter to Pat sometime last week.
Yeah, we reviewed the comments. It's the nuts and bolts of layer development.
I thought it might be summarized in the.
I did my best to kind of collectively take their comments and combine it with ours and summarize that together.
Mr. Cooper, we are addressing the runoff onto the lots on Froby. As I said, five mice staff is concerned.
All of stormwater management from Froby Lots is being handled in the stormwater pond.
I think you're concerned about the superelevation of the roadway spilling onto the front. Those are front.
We will have to look into that. And this is a new comment from me, too.
When we were out there checking site distance, our township engineer thought, go ahead, Seth.
It was clear that the superelevation you're referring to is going to cause some runoff into the front of those lots, and, you know, when those trees are out of there, it becomes somebody's front yard, and it's going to be a lot more obvious. So we've asked them to explore a potential solution to that.
We'd like to superelevate it the way it should be, the other side of the road. We will. Take care.
You're free to do that if you like. Kidding, whether or not. All right. Any other comments?
I just want to make sure that on the Froby side, there will be a sidewalk in front of all those lots that's contiguous and runs all the way down to the mailbox, and then at that point, it will either continue as a sidewalk or become a walking trail down to where it meets up with the other walking sidewalk at the cul-de-sac.
Look, that will be a trail down from the mailbox. It's a 20 percent grade. It's good exercise.
No, it's fine. Okay.
And then that trail would have to be maintained by the HOA?
Correct.
And the width of the trail part that goes from the sidewalk to the cul-de-sac?
Those are typically five feet.
Okay. So it'll be the same as the sidewalk.
Any other audience comments on the Pemberley Manor preliminary plan? Any other commissioner comments?
Is this staged or is it a whole one?
A whole one phase.
It's all one phase, but it's, it could depend on permits. We have to talk with township about outside permits. So it may be phased. Right now, it's all designed for one phase. We're hoping it's one phase, but.
Which permits? Joint permit?
DEP.
Do you need a joint permit for this?
We don't know yet. We're trying to find out.
Gotcha. Is that the only one you're concerned about? Or are there others?
That's it. The HOP and the site distance, we're sure. We've met with PennDOT on that. I'm pretty sure we're going to be okay there.
One other question. On the portion of the lane that you'll be grading, ready to pave, and then possibly that will sit idle for some time, is there a provision to have gates at both ends of that so that it's inaccessible to being driven on in the meantime, or what was the?
I don't, I mean, you're talking about before it's finally paved.
Well, yeah, say it's, you know, that it's all done and everything is said, people are living in those things and all that, and that road's not yet paved or something, or it gets.
We'll have it, we'll block it off.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Mr. Cooper, you mentioned possibly a joint permit. I assume it's for the well ends of the stream?
It's actually that existing pond that we're driving over. We think we don't need it. We've got to meet with the DEP.
So there could be a mitigation plan forthcoming? Then the onsite mitigation, if you need a joint permit for that?
Yeah. The only thing that would be need mitigation would be the stream where the pond is now.
I'm simply asking because right now we're not seeing any type of mitigation on the plan. I assume it'll come in at final. I just didn't know if it would take, if that would occur on this particular site or somewhere else, if that would be considered part of the planning approval process. If there's onsite mitigations, I don't, if they're in Peters, is that something we would look at?
We'll find out. We should have, if we do anything, we should have.
Hopefully it's onsite.
Yeah.
Any additional commissioner comments? Hearing none, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plan for Pemberley Manor as detailed. Planning staff memo dated October 3rd, 2019, subject to the 19 conditions detailed there.
I have a motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Towns?
Good luck. That brings us to our next new business item, which is the planning commission recommendation for a variance on wall height, Pooch Pit at 2873 Washington Road. The company I'm employed by, PVE, did the original site design for this project, therefore I'll be recusing myself from this discussion, and Mr. Smith will handle it from here on out.
Good. Thank you very much. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the Pooch Pit facility located at 2873 Washington Road. It was approved by Planning Commission for Construction in 2017, ultimately received their occupancy permit in 2019, March of that year. The site plan included a 9,960 square foot dog care facility, grooming facility, overnight daycare type of thing. A very substantial difference from what you see on the screen there. That area was taken before the development was finalized. They are now coming back to the township in terms of the zoning hearing board requesting a variance for wall height because since the final occupancy of the building, there have been a number of complaints received by both the township and the developer about the sound of dogs barking in the outdoor portion of the facility. The applicant is coming to the township looking for a 16-foot tall sound wall, which would ultimately be a 10-foot variance from the permitted 6-foot tall wall height that is prescribed in our ordinance. The applicant did a number of sound studies throughout the development of the site. He did one at the beginning and then two at the end, kind of comparing pre and post development sound levels, and then ultimately comparing the sound of the dogs barking post-development to compare to the existing background noise of the facility. The township staff has worked with the developer many times. We had our own sound meter out there. Now, we're not sound engineers, but we were still taking readings and comparing data. The results of these studies collectively showed that while there's not a continuous excess of 10 decibels over the background noise, there are spikes of sound that exceed 5 decibels, which is the maximum permitted spike for an ongoing business-related activity. So because of that, there is some kind of remediation necessary. And it even been voiced to us by the applicant prior that, you know, even if it wasn't conclusive that there were multiple sound violations, he still wanted to come up with a solution to deal with what he perceived as a problem regardless. Attached or on the screen there is a map showing the location of the facility and some of the complaints that he has received, primarily from the houses located behind the facility that are obviously and most immediately adjacent to the property, so those would be the ones that are most susceptible to these noise complaints. As you can see on the screen, the applicant is proposing a sound wall located around the rear of the outdoor area of the facility that, per the applicant's consultants, would effectively screen this site from all noise and prevent it from getting into the surrounding properties. I've got a couple aerial images provided by the applicant that show the proposed laws that relates to the site today. This is what you would ultimately see from Route 19. That white is the newly proposed sound wall located in the back of the facility. This would be along Old Washington Road. Now, although the wall is 16 feet in height, we approximate it only visible about nine and a half to 10 feet as you're sitting on Old Washington Road because when you're on Old Washington and the facility's off to your right or your left, there's a pretty significant immediate drop right there, so much to a degree that we had the applicant initially stall a guide rail at that facility, preventing the vehicles coming off the road and careening into his facility. So there is a pretty significant drop there. The wall would be enough, far enough away from the road that there would be a visible drop in the height of the wall. This would be your perspective as you're traveling in the opposite direction along Old Washington Road, and this one he has shown some additional landscape screening that could potentially be planted in front of the wall to help screen it and buffer it a little bit more from view. You know, in our workings with the developer, we feel at this point that he's kind of done his due diligence on providing a potential solution to the problem. We're comfortable making a recommendation to the zoning hearing board, which we'll be doing Tuesday night, that they approve the variance, subject to five separate conditions, the most significant of which says that, you know, he needs to put some landscaping in front of that wall, between the wall and Old Washington Road to kind of help buffer it from view, and, you know, other small things that'd be consistent with the main structure. And we kind of wanted to make sure that that is approved by staff and doesn't have to come back to a board. So our two conditions there about landscaping and materials, make sure that it's approved by staff, kind of in the long term, but so we can have a little bit of back and forth on that. But again, Tuesday night, we're going to be making a recommendation to the zoning hearing board that they approve this variance, subject to those five conditions. If you choose to make a recommendation, then those would ultimately be the conditions that we would recommend you place in it. I'm here to answer any other questions. We have the applicant and his consultant here as well.
Can you just explain, you have a paragraph on stormwater management issues? Just verbalize it.
Sure. You want me to take this, Seth?
Yeah.
Stormwater, it leaves the site in two places currently. We have to, post-development, we have to collect it into stormwater basins. We leave it to those same points at rates that are lower than rates where it drains right now. It's pretty standard design.
Are they dry basins or wet basins?
They are dry basins.
And we're not including them for any type of open space or anything else? And we do have adequate?
We have no open space requirements in this project, actually, but they will be part of the open space that the HOA has to maintain.
Traditionally, they would not be included in open space calculation, but because they have no open space requirement, it's part of a previous agreement on the property between the current owner and the township, it next any potential open space requirements for future development. However, they have 13 percent open space, which exceeds the traditional 10 percent requirement, so even if they did.
Net connection, this question's to Seth from Froby Lots to the Lower Road, Lower Cul-de-sac. Will it be behind the lots or will it be more of a sidewalk?
Well, our intention here, so the cluster mailbox for these lots along Froby is located approximately this location. We want to establish a walking trail that comes into the rear end of the cul-de-sac, whatever that needs to be, whatever kind of form that takes, but ultimately getting them potentially all the way up into the park, along the sidewalks, along these new proposed roads into that Peterswood Park parking lot.
Can you orient me which park of Peterswood Park you think's where it's connected to?
Peterswood Park is located back here. So this, right here, you see the stub on this parking lot? I can actually zoom in on that. That would be the future connection of Bernie Road, which comes this direction to Sugar Camp.
Is that backside?
Yes.
Ron Homes is going to grade that entire leg out for the township.
Can you go back to the master, that little stretch beyond, is it Pemberley Court, the second cul-de-sac?
Yes.
That little stretch right there, as Pat just said, will be, the only obligation that the developer has is to grade that out and get all the necessary permits for that earthwork and any stream crossings. The township will at some point come in, pay to pave it and put sidewalks on it.
But it not necessarily will be open when the neighborhood is approved, right?
It's undecided at this point.
And what about keep if it takes a little time between A and B? What about, you know, keeping it clear and things like that? They're done when they're done.
Yeah, when they grade it.
So that's us to maintain it until it's ready to pave.
Keep it ready to pave.
Hey Seth, condition one mentions a letter from LSSE.
Yep.
Is that summarized in your summary of letters or anything else that you should have included in that letter? I couldn't find it in here. I'll look to see it.
I'll defer to Sean if he thinks there's anything that's sticking out. We gave the letter to Pat sometime last week.
Yeah, we reviewed the comments. It's the nuts and bolts of layer development.
I thought it might be summarized in the.
I did my best to kind of collectively take their comments and combine it with ours and summarize that together.
Mr. Cooper, we are addressing the runoff onto the lots on Froby. As I said, five mice staff is concerned.
All of stormwater management from Froby Lots is being handled in the stormwater pond.
I think you're concerned about the superelevation of the roadway spilling onto the front. Those are front.
Yes, we will have to look into that. And this is a new comment from me, too.
When we were out there checking site distance, our township engineer thought, go ahead, Seth.
It was clear that the superelevation you're referring to is going to cause some runoff into the front of those lots, and, you know, when those trees are out of there, it becomes somebody's front yard, and it's going to be a lot more obvious. So we've asked them to explore a potential solution to that.
We'd like to superelevate it the way it should be, the other side of the road. We will take care of it.
You're free to do that if you like. Kidding, whether or not. All right. Any other comments?
I just want to make sure that on the Froby side, there will be a sidewalk in front of all those lots that's contiguous and runs all the way down to the mailbox, and then at that point, it will either continue as a sidewalk or become a walking trail down to where it meets up with the other walking sidewalk at the cul-de-sac.
Look, that will be a trail down from the mailbox. It's a 20 percent grade. It's good exercise.
No, it's fine. Okay.
And then that trail would have to be maintained by the HOA?
Correct.
And the width of the trail part that goes from the sidewalk to the cul-de-sac?
Those are typically five feet.
Okay. So it'll be the same as the sidewalk?
Any other audience comments on the Pemberley Manor preliminary plan? Any other commissioner comments?
Is this staged or is it a whole one?
A whole one phase.
It's all one phase, but it's, it could depend on permits. We have to talk with township about that, outside permits. So it may be phased. Right now, it's all designed for one phase. We're hoping it's one phase, but.
Which permits? Joint permit?
DEP.
Do you need a joint permit for this?
We don't know yet. We're trying to find out.
Gotcha. Is that the only one you're concerned about? Or are there others?
That's it. The HOP and the site distance, we're sure. We've met with PennDOT on that. I'm pretty sure we're going to be okay there.
One other question. On the portion of the lane that you'll be grading, ready to The front is the absorption side. So if you get some snow piled up, you're just adding mass and probably increasing the transmission loss of the panel. You're not going to hurt the panel.
It's not going to get pushed over?
Oh, no. Oh, no. We do these for wind designs. I've done these in Florida, down in Hollywood, Florida, up on top of 30-story buildings, 150 mile an hour wind load. That has to be a consideration of our design is making sure we meet the wind load conditions.
And then you say there's no reason to tilt the top of it in so that it wouldn't keep the sound in?
We already have.
Going plum is fine.
Yeah, we already have plenty of height. You know, I said, we're a little bit conservative in our numbers, but that height is going to give us more than we need. But we'd rather be on that side of it.
Is there a provision that if that doesn't stop the complaints of more sound than what you expected is coming out, that you could do something like that or add to it?
Well, what we can say is we're going to be.
Basically, yeah, it's condition.
Yeah, there's condition listed in the initial agreement.
Okay. But is that physically possible for this type of sounds barrier, sound wall?
To work?
You could add another, you could add additional height if needed?
Yeah, actually, you can add either way, lineal footage wise or height wise. But really, there's a point of diminishing return. Actually, the 14 foot would probably suffice in this design, but we ran it to 16 foot. You start getting above that by two foot, you may get a half a dB reduction on top of what you have. So I can say it'll be well below what typical ordinance is. And I know we're going beyond that because there's also a nuisance concern. We're addressing that nuisance concern as well. And I think where there's some benefit to, again, the neighbors behind there where the complaints are coming from, is they're going to be out of line of sight of the animals, of that open area. The noise is going to get absorbed. We're going to get traffic noise absorbed. You put some foliage in front of that, there's going to be some additional benefit to that. It'll help have that fade away. We've done this kind of work for the oil and gas industry throughout Ohio, Pennsylvania, West Virginia. We've done these walls 30, 40 foot tall for noise control. And again, these are property line levels, maybe 60 dB has to be met at the property line. And we're running compressors at 115 dB, maybe 30 yards away from that. So we designed that wall to handle that flanking noise, but they have to be within that ordinance. And we could do that that close with those walls at 115 dB compressor noise, we feel we can handle the dogs barking.
The rendering does give you a good idea of what it looks like, but it really doesn't do justice to the product. The product's a much finer.
One other question with, I can't find the picture now, but in that one, in the one shot here is, so here there's.
Can you go to that?
A wall on one side and then the wall, the retaining wall to the back of the property and then the sound wall is behind the retaining wall, correct? That's on the hillside.
Yeah.
Has there been any checking on if the sound is reflected off of the wall and then would have, would gain any height? Is there any way that it could, you know, within those two walls that that sound could somehow get shot up to a higher elevation and it'll come over the wall?
No, in fact, that.
Or is that that height taking care of that?
Yeah, well, and besides the height, that's the idea of the, it's called an NRC, Noise Reduction Coefficient. The absorption material itself is going to eliminate just what you brought up.
Okay.
So, yeah, we will create a tunnel effect. We'll actually absorb that noise.
Okay.
You'll see these a lot on berms that are lighter weight for highways. Instead of doing a concrete mash, you'll see something with absorption that you can put on some of the highway berms because they're lightweight too. So we're not going to put a lot of load on that soil. And we already had soil compaction information given to us by the general contractor who did the work. So we're good on that end as well.
If there was any reflection, it would actually reflect back towards 19 instead of towards the houses.
Okay.
We're located right in Bridgeville, so right down the road. If we can address any questions anytime, we can be available.
What's the lifetime expectancy of those walls?
We've had them for 30 years. We do a lot, done a lot down in Louisiana, gone through Katrina flood. I've done a lot of bypasses and they're still there. So I'd say minimum of 20 years. I've been doing this 30. I've had them in for 27 years and I've never had to replace one.
Is there any other audience comments?
Good evening. My name's Dwight Ferguson. I'm an attorney representing Paul Schaefer. As I read the application, it indicates that Mr. Schaefer isn't the only person. And as we've seen from the diagram here, there's several people concerned about the noise. When we originally complained about noise being generated from the pooch pit, it's actually two sources of noise. The first source of noise were the air handlers on the roof. And if you drive along Old Washington Road, you'll see that perhaps the reverse theory of what's being proposed here is applied to the air handlers, which is there's a three-way wall, which is part of the roof, which sort of reflects all of the noise from the air handlers back there. I think there has been some mitigation of that noise, but we'll just focus on the proposed solution here tonight. So throughout the application here, by the way, we have a full presentation, including an actual sound engineer to comment as to the science upon which the applicant is relying here. We applaud the pooch pit for taking any measures at all to try to diminish the noise. We don't want to discourage them from taking effective measures to reduce the noise to an acceptable level. But we, but this is for us kind of a pig in a poke. There's no science, at least not before the planning commission, that establishes that this is effective. There are three sound studies which are referenced in the application, but of course, none of those evaluate the effectiveness of this proposed solution. Throughout the application, there are references to, you know, it says, quote, "Our investigation has led us to one possible effective solution here. That is to construct the 16 by 120 foot length sound wall." That's in their first page of the narrative. Says, "This variance will request includes three separate hardships. The first is, for the wall to be effective, it needs to be a specific height." Maybe this isn't the time, but there's really nothing from a sound engineer that has demonstrated why this height or length will be effective. And third, it says, "The science behind sound manifestation has prescribed the remedy for a particular condition as being 16 by 120 and as close to the source as possible." And it talks about how much they expect the diminution of noise to be. But really, in order for anybody to buy into this theory, there ought to be a mock-up so that we can actually put the number of dogs outside that the pooch pit has traditionally had. It's a very well-known factor because we have both photographs and videos in which we can count the size and the volume of dogs that are out there. At least they have been out there. I think there's been reasons why the population is diminished there, but, so we want to be able to provide diminution for whatever is deemed to be sort of the maximum quantity of dogs that might be out there on any given day. And really, a mock-up should be done. Sort of, the sound has been tested according to Mr. Koons and it was in excess of what the ordinance permits. And really, a mock-up should be done and let's test this theory. Bring the panels out. They don't need to be bolted into the ground. Set them up and let's see if it achieves the represented result. Because what we don't want to have happen is that these are put up and, you know, we're still being affected by the noise. And they said, but we put up this wall. We did something and we spent a lot of money, but it won't matter, you know, if that's not the case. So that's really where our concern lies. When you talk about a five decibel over, you know, and I've had enough cases with sound engineers to know that I wouldn't talk to you about removing your appendix or about sound. They are really very specific sciences and it's easy to not know what you're talking about. So I won't try to explain. But I do know that, you know, if one item is producing noise at five decibels and another is at 10, 10 is not double five when it comes to decibels. It's many, many times louder than five. That's just the way that sound is measured. Perhaps getting into the area that I do know something about, so they're seeking a variance for this. In order to, in order for this planning commission to recommend a variance, they have to be able to articulate with a straight face that they can meet the variance criteria. So in this case, they have to show that there are unique physical circumstances or conditions that are peculiar to this particular lot. There aren't. The lot is beautifully developed. They're making strong economic use of the lot. The problem is the use. You know, if it was a whistle factory, it wouldn't be that it's hilly or on a bank that's the problem. That's not what the problem with the site is. It's the occupant that's the problem. So there really is no, nor can they identify any unique physical condition about the property that would justify a height variance for a fence. The second is that there's no possibility that the property can be developed in strict conformity with the zoning ordinance to enable reasonable use of the lot. This is a, I think there's a $2.5 million loan on this property. They're making very good economic use on the lot, of the lot. They don't need a fence to make good economic use. Maybe what they need to do is don't put 70 dogs outside during the daytime. Or maybe don't have dogs outside. Or maybe enclose the dogs in some fashion. You know, it's a big, open facility. It's beautiful. That's the way that you can be sure that the noise will be diminished. So they can, they're already making good use of the lot. They don't need this to continue doing business. The next one is that the hardship hasn't been created by the appellant. There's probably a textbook out there that talks about kennels and people seeking variances where the hardship is actually created by the applicant. So they could never qualify for a variance. The next is it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Well, it's a permitted use. So we wouldn't argue that it alters the essential character of the neighborhood. There's an aesthetic condition with regard to the wall that I think everybody's picked up and that this is the minimum variance. But if they can just control the dogs instead of building, you know, tall walls, it just seems like a much more reasonable solution. So I have no idea, in the absence of a, of scientific proof of the effectiveness of this wall, why planning would already have decided to recommend this for a variance. And with this legal, the legal criteria before us, I have no idea why anybody would recommend this in the absence of such proof. And they haven't had the hearing yet. They're entitled to have a hearing and maybe they will come forward with that proof. But I will tell you that, you know, we've, and this is outside of your control, but our approach here is we've sent a subpoena request to Mr. Lonich, who's the solicitor for the zoning hearing board, asking them to give us the scientific data or studies or reports that you have, which are justifying these scientific statements about the effectiveness, you know, of this wall. And then when we get to the zoning hearing, we'll have a sound expert who can either corroborate that they were correct in that analysis or maybe not. So we're asking, you know, we want them to mitigate the sound, but I don't know how anybody could say, "I am convinced that this works," when there's actually no evidence of that other than a good reputation from a company that makes a good product. So, thank you.
Any other audience comments? Any more, Mr. comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Could I have the applicant's representative back up again? And just to ask the question that the attorney brought up, is it possible, and I'm not telling you to do this, is it possible to bring panels out and set them by the road or set them on top of the wall? Is that a possibility?
It would achieve nothing, to be honest. I mean, there's a reasoning for that height. There's a reasoning for that lineal footage. If we try to put something up there, I can't understand how to make a mock-up and put it in the corner there. It's not going to surround it and it's not going to go over top of it. We do have a pooch pit engineer. We do have him present. So there's a science behind what we're speaking of. But we can show you panels. We have panels.
My second question is, is, is there, maybe you don't know the answer, I'm just maybe a rhetorical question. What happens if the zoning hearing board does not approve the variance in the wall height? Is there a backup plan? Does the applicant have a backup plan to?
We just came up with the best solution based on.
Just one solution?
Yeah, well, we followed the noise study that was already presented. We did some acoustical analysis ourselves. We just could make the best recommendation we had.
Okay, so you're just, the applicant, and you're going once talking to the applicant, so I've got to go with what you're telling me.
And, yeah, and he spoke to others and there was suggestion of, let's put some absorption here, let's do that. And truthfully, it's not even a Band-Aid. We needed something that was going to work and this was the design that came up that would work.
Okay, thanks. I have a question for Seth.
Sure.
And reading the statute, the noise level shall not exceed five, whatever that is, decibels or something.
Yep.
Slow above the residual background level. I don't have any clue what that means. However, does that put them in the red zone? Does this make this a prob, I mean, it's not continuous, but it's a spike in.
Right.
In noise.
There is that difference there between continuous at 10 decibels over and spikes at five. We've noticed, and it's been proven by the studies, that those spikes in five are exceeding the ordinance's permitted noise levels for operation activity.
Okay, so they are in.
There are points in time where they're in violation of our sound.
Okay, so they're in violation. So what are the conditions that you're recommending if we make a recommendation is that we could do all this and we could still come back on, I think it's number?
Number three.
Number three, that it's not good enough, correct?
Correct.
But they do have to do something because they're in violation.
Correct.
Nice question. So I'm looking at the sound studies number one, two, and three. And then on this pre-construction?
Okay.
It was a 62.21 decibels?
Okay.
So that's before there's any dogs, right?
Yep. Well, that was before construction of the facility.
Correct, so certainly no dogs.
Bear site, Route 19, yeah. Bear site, yep, no dogs.
And then we're looking at, let's skip the one where it actually went down. And then the one that's 628 through 630 post-construction and you're getting only 63.42. So just about the sound study number three. Do we know how those tests were done, like how many dogs were outside, what time it was done? And then my second question would be, so then, does that mean that then the differential between?
Pre-construction.
What the sound was when it was just highway traffic and everything else was 62 and we're talking about an increase by just one point to one? Or am I missing something?
No, I don't. Again, we're not sound engineers, but to our understanding, if you've got a bear site and you're getting all that noise from 19, the addition of the building has helped buffering some of that noise while creating its own additional.
So you're saying that the building took it and you took it down and then the dogs took it back up? Is this?
Well, that ambient noise, yes.
I can answer this question.
Exactly.
I'm Zach Willens on the developer. The third study was taken in response to this gentleman's argument about the HVAC noise. So we put that receiver directly in front of that HVAC to make sure the HVAC wasn't crossing the 10 dB a threshold. So we, it was 61 before we built the building. Built the building, goes down to 59, I think, 58. And so we received a complaint from Mr. Ferguson about the HVAC.
Right.
Reef top unit. And that's where it registered the, was 62.
So then, so then the 63.42 was for your purposes?
That was new.
Was to measure the HVAC, not necessarily dogs?
That's correct. Now, it didn't pick up any dog noise either.
So this doesn't pick up any dogs? Have there been any done?
And that's directly, that's directly between our property and Mr. Ferguson's.
Right, I understand. Okay. So then as far as any noise studies that measure?
That would have been sound study number two.
That was sound study?
That picked up dogs.
Sound study two picked up dogs, yeah.
That's the 59?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So we lowered the ambient noise. So, so we lowered the ambient noise of the, of the traffic, basically. But we replaced it with a little dog noise, yeah.
So that was the spike?
That was the average ambient.
That was the average.
If you look into the date of the, of the study, there are spikes that...
I think, I think, I think the spike, I want to say goes to 71 or 75. So what's a gunshot?
Over nine, you ever heard of it?
Over hundred, yeah. So that spike just, it barely goes over...
A gunshot?
So if the...
No, it barely goes over threshold.
Okay. So what does the threshold say?
10 for average overall, 5 for spikes.
Okay. All right.
Over the residual, yes.
And then I saw in here that you guys have tried to do your own mitigation here by, by changing like the number of dogs you let out?
Yeah.
And things like that. So have you done any type of sound studies since you made some of your own modifications?
I believe, I believe not. I would have to check on that though, just to make sure. But yeah, we, in response to the neighborhood, we limited the amount of dogs out there, but, you know, we have a business to run and we can't let this get in the way of that. So...
So is that what you're doing now?
So our solution, our solution is not to close the business.
Sure.
Obviously, and it's not to curtail the dogs outside.
Right.
Now, by the way, the dogs are not outside at night.
Right, I saw that.
You know, so...
Until 6:00 PM, you said, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and we, we are active brains going through every possible solution. I think I, you get, they have the comments, the letter I wrote, right, and the application.
Yes.
That goes through kind of the whole thought process of trying to do anything but build a wall.
Right, no, I see. Yeah, I saw.
And the science and the experts, you know, we all believe this is the best, best solution. So, and we can do some, you say we can do some actual model, you know, run some scenarios and...
Acoustic modeling?
Can you explain?
Bernard Kenny with AVT Inc. I'm the noise consultant for Florida and Pennsylvania. The early question about bringing panels out in the field to try to measure the effectiveness, it probably wouldn't be a good idea without having the whole wall built. However, we can go in like we've done in the past with SoundPlan. It's a well-known worldwide acoustical noise model, SoundPlan version 8.1. We can go in, we can pull into Google Earth image, we can go out and do field testing of peak hour ambient with the dogs to get a source point, to get the height off the ground. Then we can go in and take the STC and then of the panels we're going to use, absorptive versus reflective, we can run the SoundPlan model with nearby receivers at the actual elevations and it will give you a color image of, we can do an acoustical model if we had to with just the traffic noise for background to show you what that was. And we could add the dogs to show you what the dogs were. And then the model would verify the validity of the wall height proposed. The model could also be used to enhance the geometry of the wall proposed. So you really don't need to be out in the field trying to drag panels out there like David at AVT, so that's not going to get you anywhere. Use, use SoundPlan version 8.1.
So what you're saying is you use the models...
Computer model, yeah.
Not back in, but then it's a calculation, basically.
It's a calculation model. It's, it's used worldwide. SoundPlan, I mean, you can bring in any acoustical consultant you want. I've been doing this for 25 years in SoundPlan. There's only two, SoundPlan and CADNA. SoundPlan is probably the better choice. We've used it on numerous projects. So we could go in and do, if you want to go down that road, we could go in and do a baseline with the traffic based on a four-lane divided. I can tell you right now today that the dogs that I witnessed today do not interfere with the ambient noise in the road. Meaning I can still hear, well, I was out there today, I could still hear four lanes of traffic standing at the corner of Pooch Pit and standing on the other side of the road. I'm not saying they're not making noise, I'm just saying they're not loud enough so any reasonable person could stand out there and say, "I can't hear any cars on a four-lane divided road." But back to your case, the, the field test is probably not going to yield a good result. SoundPlan version 8.1, we get you there. Done it on numerous studies. We did it Sunrail in Florida, done it on peaker plants, gas compressor stations throughout Pennsylvania. It's a good platform model. It requires input of real-time ambient data. First, we go out with a Type 1 sound level analyzer like I had today and we could get peak sound of the most dogs they could put out there, take the highest level they have, the dogs of the source point, identify the height off the ground, which I suspect is probably three feet or less, put that into the model. We could do a base run with just the Pooch Pit's wall as it stands today. SoundPlan will calculate a color image of the noise reduction as far back as you want to go to the homes that are complaining and further beyond. Then we can do a second run with the enhanced wall, 16 feet high, see the further reduction to see if we can meet the code. And then you can do another run with just the traffic to, and the traffic's making noise, I mean, there's no doubt. I was out there today, doing stuff a long time. I'm not going to come up here and tell you something that's not true, but I could hear. I mean, I primarily do a lot of highway traffic noise in Florida. I'm a member of the FDOT noise task team and I'm a full member of the Institute of Noise Control Engineering. So if we had to do that, the model would probably be the best guidance you could have to determine if we can meet code and meet that 5 dB spike.
Seth, thank you for another question. So with the sound setting number two, which is one that is, that's, I understand to be, that's, that's the one that relates to the dogs.
Right.
So we were talking about things that are relevant. The sound setting number three really isn't necessarily relevant to what we're talking about here. So sound setting number two, was that done like over an eight-hour period during that day? Was it done, so do we know what hours it spiked?
That was done over a three-day period, I believe.
Over a three-day period?
Yes, ma'am.
And was it done like during the day and then some during at night, like once you had brought the dogs in?
Mm-hmm.
And is the data from that available? Or whether for us, will that be available for the zoning hearing board?
We can make sure they have it.
Because that makes a difference, right? I mean, because the average doesn't mean anything if the spikes, the spikes would have to at least be during the timeframe when the dogs are outside.
And they were.
Okay. But it'd be interesting, helpful to see how many times, during what timeframe, you know, something like that.
It was, you can count on one hand. Yes.
And you don't have that here today, though, right?
I, on my computer.
Yeah.
That's, that's an excellent comment, but you can have that data just where the dogs are outside instead of the whole 72. I have a question for maybe more of an audience comment. Anybody, anybody in the audience have a problem with the height of the wall that's being asked?
Excuse me? Yeah, they don't qualify for variance. That's our problem. I mean, you can't build big crazy structures because it might stop the sound. Because this is really about, this is really about whether or not they can construct a structure on a commercial facility and whether or not they can justify it because they can't make good economic use of the property. I, I think some of this discussion is super-duper misleading. Let me just help out if I can.
I'm a lawyer, so I know what the, I know what the criteria is for variance. I'm just asking special questions.
But I'm talking about the sound studies.
About the what?
Sound studies.
Okay.
On this last discussion we have. So first of all, it sounds like the township has the sound studies that were identified in the application. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And measurement for purposes of compliance with the township's sound ordinance is from the property line of the applicant, is it not?
It's from the residential property line.
Okay. So be across Old Washington Road in this case? Or at the center of Old Washington Road?
Which is, no, no, it'd be up off of Old Washington Road, several feet out of the township right-of-way.
Okay.
And I don't even know if those studies were at that point.
Right. So when we talked about we could measure from people's houses, not where you measure from. It's from, in this case, it would be the east, east right-of-way line of Old Washington Road.
Give a picture of Old Washington.
Sound study locations. One, two, three.
Up there you go.
Well, okay. So, and this term ambient noise, I, I'm not sure who prepared this narrative or who, who reached the conclusion that the, about these ambient noise levels. But when we talk about, if you're doing a sound study, to answer the question, what is the sound impact of this use on the property? The only way you can do that is to first identify the background or ambient noise as completely unaffected by the proposed use. So when, when the term ambient noise is used, that should, that should be the neighbor, the noise that's generated at the appropriate location not impacted in any fashion by the Pooch Pit. What we don't have, so, so pre-construction, if we were standing at that location, we could anticipate that the noise was 62.21, 21 dB, but we don't know whether that's an average over what period of time, whether it's a weighted dB or not, but let's just go with that at 62. The next was post-construction. When they tell you that the ambient noise was 59.67, then that, that too, that does not tell you that the Pooch Pit reduced the noise. It just tells you this is the background noise without the Pooch Pit on that, in that period of time when the study was done. The other factor to tell you what the impact of the Pooch Pit would be is, well, what's, what's the noise? What was the noise when you take into consideration the effect of the Pooch Pit? And that wouldn't be the ambient noise. That's just not a number that's given to us. And then finally, the June, the June study just tells you that the noise from Route 19 or from the car dealership or the adjacent uses unaffected by the Pooch Pit would have been 63.42. But we don't know what the study said that the noise was generated when you add the Pooch Pit onto that, right? Now, it could stay the same if the noise generated by, generated by the Pooch Pit was not greater than 63.42, but we don't know. So this isn't really even useful information. And when you talk about counting on one hand how many times something spikes, it depends on what your ordinance says. Depends on how you're supposed to calculate the sound. So for example, when all of us are tucked in our beds at night sleeping and it's very, very quiet, if I come in with Peter's Township Band's cymbals and crash them in your ears, I'd say, "Ha, it was only one spike during the night." But you'd leap out of your skin. And that's why, that's why sound is measured in, in intervals, which, and I don't know what the ordinance requires in terms of those intervals.
And that's why there's a difference in ordinance between day and night. So that's not, the dogs aren't out at night. And as far as the ambient, you need to have some kind of...
Chris, you've got to come up with a mic, please, because we're on TV. So, it's not just pressing the room.
Okay, so I think what Dave was trying to say is, I haven't seen the ordinance since I just got briefly involved with this. I would need to know what the daytime, nighttime. Municipalities have ordinances for daytime, nighttime. Normally, a typical daytime, nighttime, if you follow HUD, which a lot of people do, Housing Urban Development, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Other ordinances are 7:00 to 7:00. It could be 7:00 to 6:00 normally. The daytime, nighttime split could be as low as 5, could be a little bit higher. I don't know what your ordinance is for the daytime level.
We're calling it out. But the bottom line here is we have a noise problem, Dwight. Your client is being burdened by barking dogs. We have, we're trying to solve that problem and you're trying to fight against it. I don't understand.
No. I'm just saying that unless there is data that convinces the planning commission or the staff...
We don't need data. There's a problem out there. Ask your client.
No, we don't need to establish as a problem. We need to establish that building...
We're trying to solve a problem, Dwight, that your client has brought to our attention.
Right.
We're trying to solve it.
Well, and I appreciate that, and that's what I began with. But we don't, but, but we can't just say that anything that we do is solving. The intent is clear and it's a good intent and we applaud that. Look at the...
My question earlier was, the wall itself, let's, let's just throw, let's just stay germane to the wall, the variance of the wall. Even if this was for a visual effect that we were trying to block out, not just noise. Do you or obviously your client have an issue with that wall?
I think, I'll speak, I'll speak without consulting with him, but I would say that if, if, if we were convinced that it would, that it would be effective as represented in solving this problem, then I think we, then we would probably not have such an issue with the wall.
If it doesn't solve the problem, township, one of the, one of the recommendations is that we come back and we say, "You haven't solved the problem. You have to do it again."
I haven't seen the recommendations, but...
The applicant is going to throw a whole bunch of money at this. And if the township or other powers that be, council, the officers, owner, or us says it's not enough, they've got to go, they've got to take a second swing with this. So I think what I'm speaking to myself, if there's not an issue with the wall and if we're trying to, you know, give the applicant a way to solve this problem, we all agree in the room, we're not trying to shut them down.
Right. Nor would they shut down if they didn't build the wall. They'd just go to a, a more modest way of solving the problem.
They're going to throw a lot of money at trying to solve it the first, first time around and, and, you know, I, I've set it up. I'm repeating myself, so that's kind of what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I understand.
Since you said you hadn't read it, so want just sort of you're aware, one of the conditions is that the township reserves the right to require additional noise mitigation should the noise from the outside portion of the facility continue to be an issue. So I think what you're hearing here is that the risk is being taken by the Pooch Pit because if it doesn't work, there's no thing that says they get to come back and say like, "You guys said this was fine." If there's still a noise issue, if there's still a quote-unquote violation, then, then they have to go back to the drawing board again.
Yeah, I can only tell you that...
It's just, it's just not a get out of jail free card.
Well, two comments on that. The first is that if that was a covenant that was enforceable by neighbors who are affected, it would mean something to me. The problem for me is, is that every single day of my practice in the last 30 years, I probably told somebody the very bad news, which that a, which is that a municipality does not have an obligation to enforce its ordinances, nor can we compel them to do that. But if it was enforceable by us, it would probably make us feel better.
We're, we're here today with a property owner along the Route 19 corridor that we've identified through complaints from the, your client as well as other neighbors. We're here enforcing our ordinance. I didn't understand that last comment. But we don't, we're not obligated to enforce our own...
I don't believe they were ever cited for a noise violation.
No, because they're working with us to solve the problem. If they weren't working with us to solve the problem, we would be citing them and we would be telling them to keep the dogs inside.
Understood. Look, I have two simple points. Don't approve something if you don't know it's going to work. And the second is, nobody should approve something unless, unless it meets the legal criteria. Those are the rules for everybody. That's all.
Well, we feel that there are hardships and we can meet those criteria and we wouldn't be recommending it if it, we felt that it did not meet those criteria.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the commissioners? Can I get a motion?
So if I may make a motion to recommend, because it's recommend to the zoning hearing board that we're recommending approval, not only the five conditions that are here, but that, and I don't know quite how to word it, but that the study that was referenced by the applicant with the module study, and he said that that be done before any construction would occur in order to, whether it's double check or confirm that what, what they proposed meets, meets a testing, testing study. Versus, I'm not recommending the backup, I'm recommending the computer model, whatever that was.
Sound plan?
Number six.
Correct. Are you saying that you would, you would be comfortable with that recommendation of staff reviewing that model before construction begins on said wall? So would you want that model brought back to anyone else? I guess...
I'll, I'll add, we're subject to approval from Township staff.
Okay. Can I get a, do you have like a, what's the specific name of that program you were referring to?
Sound plan. You can Google this. Version 8.1 is the latest one out now.
Thank you.
And why wouldn't we do that ahead of spending money to build the wall? Just a question I have.
Probably because we've done 50, 60 of these walls. We knew where the source was. We knew where the receptors were. We knew the height of the existing barrier wall, and we knew increasing that height would give us more than we needed for the planning. We have, we have no problem putting that together.
Michelle, I'm going to try to, yeah, I'm going to try to get that condition down. Is that okay?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Condition six would be that the sound plan computer model be reviewed and approved by staff prior to the construction of the sound wall?
Yes. And so it should be A versus the...
Well, that would be prior to...
Well, I was referencing the computer model, so...
Wouldn't that be prior to the building permit approval for the wall?
Yes.
So that would be the contingent, the, the, the approved prior to approval of the building permit?
If I made it.
I don't think we're taking...
No, we're not taking contact.
I would second that, that motion. I think the sixth criteria added to that was the, should be done. I would second that motion.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that 4-0?
4-0.
Thank you.
All right.
We're going to take a two-minute gap recess.
We need to close the planning question.
That brings us to planning, planning portion and even miscellaneous items. Very good. concludes our meeting. I'd like to call and order the public meeting for the Traffic Impact Fee Advisory Committee, October 10th, 2019.
Let me just, before Mike Mudry, our Township Consulting Traffic Engineer, gets started here. Back in 2007, 2008, the Township adopted Traffic Impact Fee, Traffic Impact Fee ordinance, and there was a lot that went into that. There were land use assumptions reports, roadway sufficiency analysis, all these criteria that are laid out in the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. So we went through all those. We've been collecting those traffic impact fees. We have a Traffic Impact Fee Capital Improvement Program, and that's what Mike's here tonight to talk about. We, we have some updates that need to occur to that capital improvement program, and Mr. Mudry and Seth's got some slides. We're going to go through that. And that's, this is also a recommendation to count.
Good.
So, I know we did this last year. Ed, when did we do this last year? Probably summertime, I think it was, last year. Just to give you an update, and I'll walk through the report really quick, just hitting the highlights. And if you have questions as I go through, just feel free to ask. Guy's over on the end, too. Feel free to ask. On page one of the report, you can see the current fund balance in each of the, we have to keep the money in two separate accounts. We have a northern traffic service zone and a southern traffic service zone. The, the line kind of, it's strange how it goes. It kind of goes up Route 19 to McMurray, then turns and runs along to McMurray up to Brookwood, and then bends back down Brookwood and meanders out to the other end of the Township. So, there's a northern half and a southern half. And the development in each side, you take the money in and you account for it separately. So, the fund balance in the northern TSA at the end of last month, 769,000, so forth, and in the southern TSA, 297,000, so forth. This is all based on the impact fee. The current impact fee that we set last year is $1,500 per new PM peak hour trip. There's interest that we've been collecting on those things. That's also included in there. And then you could see expenditures. Since the inception of the, of the traffic impact fee, we've spent 189,000 and change in the northern TSA, and 514,000 and change in the southern TSA. Primary, the biggest two projects that we did were Center Church Road, and we're starting to make payments on the Rolling Hills Drive development. And there have been some refunds because there's a refund process when people pay trips in, in advance, and either they change the size of their development or come back and do another study, and we find out there's less trips generated. They're entitled to a refund. There's also on the second page, the number of trips that have been purchased. You can see in the second and third paragraphs. The second paragraph tells you how many trips we've forecasted over the life of the plan. In the northern TSA, 2,536 trips. The southern TSA is 2,240 trips. And then if you jump to the paragraph below that, that's the actual number of trips we've assessed over the life of the plan so far. The northern TSA is 694 trips. That's 27% of what we think the overall plan will be. And the southern TSA, we've assessed 592 trips, 26% of what we think the overall trip assessments will be over the life of this plan. We get to the next paragraph. It talks about proposed changes. Just outlines what the rules and regulations in the MPC are that we're allowed to get together on an annual basis, provides you folks an update of what's going on. And then also, there's things that we can change. We can adjust fees. We can adjust the build year of projects on our capital improvement list. We can also take into account for construction inflation. And then the next couple pages is going into explaining some of these massive charts in here. I don't know if Seth printed these big ones out at 11 by 17, but there's a pretty involved spreadsheet that I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has. Jumping ahead to page four, we're not recommending any increase in the impact fee this year. We're keeping it at the $1,500, which I think is sustainable, which I think is also in line with what other Western PA municipalities are charging. We're in the ballpark. We're not high. We're not low. We're kind of in between. And I think the biggest thing that we want to talk about is, Seth, what's your... So, tables in the, in the, in the report, tables like five, six, seven, and eight are all the number crunching that gets you to these tables at the end. Tables eights and table nine, which tell you how we're allocating the actual impact fee, because we have so many projects on the list that if we actually charged impact fees for the full value of all the projects, we could charge a $6,000 plus dollar impact fee, but that would be way outside the market of what they're, what they're charging. We're keeping it at the $1,500 fee. So we're only funding this program at approximately 25% of what we theoretically could. So, there's a shortfall in the overall program. So what this chart does, it shows you where, and it's in the manager's regulations that the Township manager is able to flex the money around, so to speak, and what projects are we actually funding on the list. So, when we do actually get to those numbers, I was talking about 2,500 trips in the northern and 2,500 trips in the southern. Once we bill out all those and we build out all the impact fee, we're not going to be able to bill out every project on this list. We're only going to have 25% of the overall money. So we're picking and choosing what projects we're funding on this list.
What is the life of the planning that you projected?
So, so the initial study was in 2008, and was a 20-year study. So it went out to 2028, but there's no limit on how far out you can go. This is why you're allowed to update this and do things like update costs for inflation, and also take the build year in the column there that shows the project build year. You're able to push, keep pushing that further out, because when we did this in 2008, I think, and I don't know the exact number, Ed, but building, there were a significant number of building permits being churned, and all of a sudden, right after that, is when everything went cold for a number of years, and we weren't, we were hardly issuing any building permits. So while that's going on, like, the years are moving, but we're not actually moving in the projections of the original study. And then with the zoning redo here that we've had recently, again, you're seeing a change in the type of development. You know, there's been some senior housing that wasn't contemplated and things like that. Senior housing takes up big chunks of land, but is less trips than you would expect. So there's, the pace of what the trips we thought we were going to get is different. And then a lot of this, again, there's, there's a quirky rule in the MPC that when there's projects on PennDOT roadways, you can only use, you can only fund 50% of the project with impact fees. So there's another strange oddity to what's in the MPC about this program.
Just real quick on that. I don't know if they understand. If you look at this list on this chart, just looking at it real quick, I don't see any project that is not on a state road. We're dealing with, in Peters, we have a lot of state roads coming through the community, so we have to work with PennDOT to try to get these projects funded and built.
So, so over the last 11 years, that's what we're seeing. The projects that are moving forward are projects that the Township is bringing some seed money, so to speak, to PennDOT, because they're not doing projects like this, like the Valleybrook Road Interchange Project, Center Church Road, the roundabout that's going to happen down here at Beebout and Valleybrook, and then the, the other one up here at McMurray and Beebout where the gas station is. These are all individual projects that PennDOT's moving forward because the Township is saying, "Hey, we've got some impact fee money. We can show up with, you know, 10, 20% of the project cost and get the project to move."
Just, and I may not understand this completely, but we've taken in X amount of dollars so far. And of the projected build out of the Township based upon land use, what have you, we are at approximately 25% of the amount of traffic impact fees that the Township as a whole will collect at final build out.
Right.
And that funding only funds, so that, so that 100% funding, that targeted full build out only, will fund 25% of the projects which we have.
Right.
So right now, we have funded 5% roughly.
We've funded 25% of 25%.
Exactly.
Is that 5%, right? That's the math. If that's right, yeah, no, you're right. That's it.
So we funded 5% of what we, and what we believe will be required.
And, and when you look at this, like I said, the only way that these projects are going to move is in a partnership with PennDOT. And typically, a PennDOT project is a 10 or 20% match. You know, they're bringing federal dollars, and Penn, and quite frankly, PennDOT likes these projects, because I think on these last few, it's 80% federal, 20% state. Well, if we're showing up at the 20%, that's the state's share. They don't, they're getting the project. They get the federal money coming in, but they're not using their money for the project. They're using Peters Township money, and that's how the project moves forward and jumps ahead of tons of projects that people want to do.
So, to that point, then, we don't need to fund the 100% cost. We would defend about the 20% cost, because most everything is off PennDOT road.
Exactly, because that's what we're doing. We're, the only projects that are moving forward are these PennDOT projects, and that's 20%.
I'm sitting here going, "Where are we going to find 95% of the board?"
Right.
Okay, but it's not. It's really just, fine. Good.
Right.
The seed money.
Yep.
So, so basically, the biggest change on this is moving out several of the project years. And you can see the build year column. I think what we're, we're doing tonight is the three, now the next three projects that are going to happen. One is Rolling Hills Access Drive, which we added last year. So we, so we were already underfunded on a project, and we added a major project to the list. So, Rolling Hills Access Drive, the Township's share of that improvement and that project is getting paid for with impact fees. That's right, right?
2020.
And that's a 2020 build year. And then they're already starting to pace out of the impact fees for some of that construction that's been going on.
Of what's shown up there, what is that project? Is it just the bottom line, or is it the whole thing?
The whole thing is eligible. So, we have a $4 million cost in here. So, so, you know, whatever 4 million of that builds, if it, if it ends up, because it hasn't been final, hasn't been bid out yet, the final project yet. They're still finalizing design. But the line item that we have in here now, basically with inflation till next year, it's $4.2 billion.
Million.
4.2 million, sorry. My sons are learning Spanish. They're like, "I'm all confused. Millions and, you know, I'm like..."
Everybody heart attack.
Yeah. But there's commas and periods, too. That messed me up the other night.
That slide up there shows the connection down at East McMurray Road. Mike, can you just briefly, quickly describe what that improvement involves?
Well, that's, that's the road where we're taking the, we're actually taking East McMurray Road off its current alignment into the, into the property. And the folks that live on East McMurray are kind of have a, the old East McMurray is going to have like, be their private driveway now out there. At one point, we talked about roundabouts and...
How many properties would that be on that?
Like, approximately eight, eight or so. Okay, so it's, yeah. So, because, because what we don't want to have is, is when you build a turn lanes, the turn lanes go several hundred feet, and all those homes would be blocked. So now that if you can imagine, all the people turning to go up for the school, they're sitting in a turn lane or something like that, they're blocked. People can't get out of their driveways and make love. This is going to be nice, because they're able to use the existing roadway and come out. That's a traffic light in the middle there. So the old road and those people that live on it are not actually on the new road with the turn lanes and all that other stuff.
This, this 4.4 million, 227, that is the estimated total project cost? Okay. So, then the Township's...
That's the Township's share.
Yeah. Okay.
It's our half, right?
It's your half.
The school district's paying half.
I think that's the total cost.
That's, the total cost is in here, and it's eligible. It's, you know what I mean? Like, there's a cost sharing agreement, so that, the Township's paying half.
What I'm trying to do is identify this column that says cost estimate. What does that mean? That's the total cost estimate of the project build out. Is that true? Each one individual?
Which one are you looking at?
Whatever it is. Table nine, table eight.
Okay.
That's the total project cost.
Okay, right. That's the, that's the total cost of the project.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that, that, that column right there. That's the total project cost.
And...
And then where, where does it show what?
And so what we're, so right now, we're putting the whole, the whole thing is eligible for impact fees. It's up to the Township how much they pay. If there's a deal with the school district, whatever their deal is, that's what I'm saying. There's $4.2 million eligible of impact fee funding. Doesn't necessarily mean they're spending every penny of that, because, you know, the fin, the design isn't finalized. This is just based on the latest estimate. And whatever the final agreement is on the entire project, whatever, however the school district and the Township are splitting it...
50/50.
50/50. But it's eligible on here. So if you only, so if it actually comes out and the project's $3 million, and the Township only spends $1.5 million, we'll come back next year and update this number and correct that.
Right.
I'm just, what I'm doing right now is, because it's actually not, the design's not final, and it's not approved, and we're not building anything yet, I'm putting the big number in just to cover all our bases, because what you don't want to do is, you don't want to fund this, they start building, and then we don't have enough money allocated. We can come back, we're going to come back next year and adjust this number.
Yeah, Mike, I'm just trying to understand what these columns mean to begin with.
So, so the, so the, so the build year is the year that we think the, the money's going to be expended. So that's why you have Rolling Hills Access Drive 2020.
Okay.
And it's $4.2 million that we're putting into this as eligible, that could go towards the impact fee. And then what you're doing is, you're moving over, the, the percentage of the, of the project is 50/50, because it's on the dividing line with the northern and the southern.
Oh, so the district right there is northern district, southern district of Peters Township?
Right.
Okay.
That's why, so it was kind of like, that's why we drew the line the way we drew it. Most of the projects fall on that line. So, as we develop projects along 19 and McMurray, both districts can pay into it. So the, so the district's funding doesn't get imbalanced.
I do work for PennDOT, our, our company, so the word district was confusing me. So now I'm clear on what that word means.
Transportation service.
It's the transportation district, the northern district, the southern district.
Okay. So that's between north and south, 50 to the north, 50 to the south. And we have the ability to unbalance that line as we see fit to do so as a township. Okay.
Right. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend 4.2 out of the impact fee. It's just that that's how much we're putting on the plan that, you know, gives them room to pay for this.
Okay. So none of these columns have anything to do with what the state or the federal funding would be to this project?
Well, for that, for that particular one, there's no, right, there's no funding.
And this one in particular is, it's not a, it's not a state road, so...
Yes, it is.
Well, the McMurray, the...
The McMurray portion is. The McMurray portion is.
Is not, right.
Right. So the road going up into the site is not.
That's why I was asking that earlier question, to see where we were going.
Okay. And again, once we see what the final product is next year, we'll come, we're going to come back and update this next year. So we're, this is just, I don't want to say placeholder, because it's not, it kind of is. It's a placeholder. I don't want to say that we're not sure what it is, because we're close on the num, I think the number's getting close. I just don't want to...
Estimative guesstimate.
Yeah, but I don't want to shoot too low and, right, because it's actually going to get expended in this next year, because we're opening. I don't want to hand tie these guys.
It's not to exceed.
Right.
But, Michael?
Yes.
I'm sorry, am I interrupting you?
No, go ahead.
But, that, is that 20, that's, we have the build year for that as next year, because it's going to happen next year. We're changing the Valleybrook, Beebout project. Can we show them that, Seth?
Yeah, on that, on that blue table, number eight, number F, Valleybrook and Beebout, we're changing that year to 2023, because PennDOT has entered final design for that.
You can zoom out a little bit, Seth. We're hearing from PennDOT that they're in final engineering design, and we're going to have a project here in 2023 on that one. And we're going to help through the tack, traffic impact fees that we collect, we're going to go to PennDOT with a portion of the money. So, that's why we, this project's being engineered right now.
So if you go back to that table, number eight, the blue table, if you look under northern area, current budget, it's like the, you know, six column over, under letter F, you can see there's a $200,000 allocation there. And then if you go to the very last column for the southern TSA, there's a $200,000 there. So basically, the Township has said, we're going to put, we, so far, the Town... So basically, the township has said, we're going to put, we, so far, the township has said we would put $400,000 towards that PennDOT project to build that, which by the way is a great deal, $400,000 to get, you know, it's a probably a two...
Two million.
It's, yeah, it's over, yeah, it's a $2 million project. And then, do you have a picture of the other one, too? The, the other project that's moving forward is the Beebout Thompsonville McMurray project. The gas station's on the upper right side of the intersection. St. Clair's that way, 19.
This is just about kids daycare.
Yep.
It's line eight on table eight.
That's it, line eight on table eight. Once again, the same, it's the same kind of commitment, it's a little bit more expensive, it's almost 2.4 million, but the township says they're going to put in 400,000 total, 200 from each district for, for this project.
If you remember, we, earlier this year, approved the Confluence site plan here and they allocated that additional right of way for us to help make this project happen.
Right.
They donated it. Mike, is there any other major things we have to go over?
I think that's it, and then some of the other stuff, any other, like minor projects that were out there, I think what we did was we just kind of did a blanket, if anything was earlier than 2025, we pushed everything to a minimum of 2025, because we're not going to be in a position to fund any other projects except Rolling Hills, the circle, and this one before 2025.
I can't really tell much detail from this. What are we doing here? Like, what are we actually adding to the plan? It looks fairly, I mean, I'm assuming turning lanes or something, but if there...
Yeah, so the big traffic movement now, again, this is the gas station, the big traffic movement is people coming down south and making a left, and then people coming up and making a right. So that's the big improvement. Conceptually, right now, they're not showing any turn lane on the Thompsonville, but I think when they get into final design, if we can twist some arms, I think they could do a little bit of a turn lane to turn on Thompsonville without doing, changing the layout much, because it would just be pushing back a little bit further on this, because it's on a curve. You can squeeze in a lane probably for left turns.
Is that on the project moving forward, where they were putting the retaining wall there?
Yes, Confluence, yes. Right, and then when PennDOT did their conceptual design with this, they were identifying potential right of way takes, if they were going to need sliver takes along here and here. That was what Ed said, we were able to work with the developer when they came in, showed them this, and they were willing to donate that slivers of right of way. Because, you know, the biggest thing that slowed down a PennDOT project, it's not designing, and anybody can draw lines on paper, it's utility clearances and buying right of way from people. So if you get the right of way, that's one of your two or three major things that, you know, make a project move faster.
I don't know about anybody drawing lines on paper, but...
Well, I could draw you lines all day, that's the easy part.
Is there a lot of grading involved in this project, or is it basically going to stay the same as I, as I hear it?
It's, they're not, yeah, they're not going, the elevation of the intersection, it's more of a, it's more of a just taking and, for whatever reason, whatever that house is on the corner there, there's a giant PennDOT piece of right of way already there that they're going to cut into. There's already, was a, something happened back in the day, whenever they did something, they already have a piece of right of way on that side. So the earthwork cutting into that for the widening is in the right of way.
Can I ask a question about the impact fee number itself?
Yeah.
I thought it was a half last year, when the, prior years, when the number were decided. Is there, the analysis part is keeping it at 1,500 versus...
You guys can pick whatever you want.
I'm just wondering, so you talk about, you know, immediate districts that are like us, do you know where other, like the...
We, I don't know, St. Clair doesn't have, no. So I'm trying...
It's Cranberry, it's Murray, Murraysville, it was...
Murraysville is at 13 and change, I believe.
That's Cranberry.
Cranberry, I'm going to, it's comparable. I want to say it's a little bit higher than this, maybe 16, 17, something like that.
Michelle, we raised it last year.
It was 13.
Yeah, it was 13.
Yeah, we were 13 something in the one, like it was a little, it was 13 and 14.
And I think they had, you had numbers at that point, right? Like it was...
You don't have last year's thing. I don't have it with me, but we researched and contacted all those communities to see what their fees were. We, we didn't want to jump way out of the ballpark.
And that was just more my question, is are we doing, are we looking like in a build, where we at some point are on par, or we're just going to want to jump it, or are we looking to get to one and then wait five years and then do it?
Raise.
And then wait five years and then increase.
But this is your recommendation, I wanted to see, right?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
I, I mean, that's just based upon feedback from staff, that they thought that, you know, it's only been a year, we should hold where we're at.
And we don't...
I mean, the, the construction inflation, I mean, you guys probably know construction inflation, like, you have to go based on E and R, and it's like 3%.
We, we have commercial developers here, Mr. Schwalzer, Mr. Klax, and if we bring this fee up any further, there, there's not going to be any commercial development happening in our community. So we're concerned about raising it to the point where we curtail any new development. Yeah, makes it unattractive.
I mean, you see what the waters paid and what Giant Eagle...
Giant Eagle, when they did the market district, it was, their, their impact fee was 200,000 plus.
I didn't hear that.
And, and just to let you know, a lot of that impact fee, if you want to know what everybody's been charged historically, that's tables two and three, it's in here. You can see who's paid and when they've paid. The table gets a little long because individual residential lots get in one at a time or small batches at a time, but you can search down and find some of the big ones.
And my question is, the waters have paid Peters, they, they already signed a check and they have...
We have the, we have their impact fee. All impact fees are paid prior to building permits. Yep. And that thing Mike was saying, that if, if it changes or they do studies that lower that they're, they're entitled to a refund. Correct. We've had, we've had two that we've had to refund.
So in the last, I would say in the last two years, some of the bigger ones, I mean, the folks from Pooch Pit were here, they paid $42,000. The waters paid a just, up just shy of 120.
Primrose, 212.
Primrose, yeah.
There's, if we raise it too much, Rochelle, it's going to...
Yeah, no, I just...
The numbers shake up these commercial developers already.
Yeah, no, I just want to say, I didn't know that.
We had a sizable increase in taxes with the tax assessment.
Yep, right.
And it's given a lot of the tenants and a lot of the owners in Peters a problem.
Right.
Peters was always a low tax district, and people located here, you know, homes and businesses because they had a tax break in Washington County, Peters Township. It's not the case anymore. So Ed, what we're doing is recommending this program?
The, we're recommending, if you guys are comfortable, we're recommending the traffic impact fee cap, 2019 capital improvement program as revised in this report be approved by council. I just have one other question. There's a table back here that says ineligible. How's that table arrived at?
All right, so if you, yeah, if you take the, if you flip to the next page after the blue table, there's a red table. Red's bad, so that's ineligible. So basically, the ineligible projects, those are projects that have kind of, they've been, some of them have been around before the impact fee program started in 2008, it's just, you know, kind of capital improvement wish list, and then some other ones were some existing deficiencies that we know that are out there. But impact fees that are already existing, that are not caused by new development, you can't use impact fees to fix something that's already broken, I guess, is the right word. So those projects in red, these are things that, you know, we'd like to do, but they're problems today, but you can't use impact fees for. Doesn't mean that these projects aren't important, but we just don't have, we're just not able to use impact fee. So it's also, so back in the day when Mike Silvestri was here, he also wanted to not lose sight of some of these projects on the red. I mean, these are still important projects to the township, some of these things, like the Venetia Road Bridge replacement was always on there. That's the one where you, right before you, where it's on the border, but going into Findleville, where they replaced that bridge a couple of years ago. You know, that was always an important project to try to fix, you know, and we don't want to lose sight of things that are ineligible for funding but could have. And then some of these projects have As and Bs on them, like some of the ones that are As, you know, you can see that signals at some point, like McMurray and Brookwood or Beebout and Sugar Camp, they're going to need a signal someday, or they, they're right on the threshold today, but the signal, you can't pay impacts fees for. But if there's turn lanes, if you flip over, there might be a B project on the impact fee page, where turn lanes would be eligible. So, and then you have developers come in, too. Sometimes if a developer's right on top of an intersection, they have to help out with a project that's on or off the list and things like that. So like I said, it's just trying to keep an eye on all projects, not specifically just impact fee projects.
Hey, fellows, any questions over there? Art? Kim?
No, I'm good.
Kim?
Oh, good, thanks. I gotta tell you one thing, though, we gotta get started. We gotta get started at doing these things. People are looking for them and looking for them, and promises don't make a thing unless they want...
So next year, we got the East McMurray Road, Rolling Hills project happening, we've got Valleybrook Beebout coming, we've got Thompsonville East McMurray Road Beebout coming, and what's happening here at this intersection?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have some funding, what we're doing, we're going to do a project actually right here at Valleybrook underneath the, the trail here, where they've got these nice wide 12 and 13 foot comfort lanes, and the problem that Ed and I and Mark Zemitas, the engineer, discovered is when you're coming down McMurray, past Thomas, and under the bridge, and you go to make the right turn on the Valleybrook, the traffic queue backs, backs up and always blocks that right turn lane, you can never get to it.
Yeah.
And those people, so now, when you have a queue of cars on McMurray, now, all the people that want to get on that right turn lane and go, now they're stacked because they can't get to it. So we're going to do a project, we're going to shrink the lanes down. So all we're going to be done through striping, we're going to, we're going to have to mill off the top level of paving under the bridge there, because they put, kind of put rumble strips in, so we just can't move the paint line. So now we got to, we got to mill off the rumble strips they put in, but we're going to shrink the lanes down so we can get that right turn lane under the bridge, almost all the way back to Thomas, really trying to open that up. It's like a little...
So we can't widen that?
It's a pimp, well, the problem is, is we looked at widening it, widening that and keeping the 12 foot lanes out there, but the problem is, is to maintain the sidewalk, you're pushing the sidewalk into the bridge abutment. And the way the, the abutment is underneath, we'd almost be undercutting the abutment. So we, the project gets way more expensive because you got to put a structural wall there, because you're pushing it into the bridge abutment for the trail. So you could do it, and we can go back to 12 foot lanes and blow a lane through underneath there with some widening. It's just the amount of money you're spending doing that versus just milling this off and painting it, we're getting so much more for so much less cost.
So will the, will the straightaway lanes stay at 12, and you're going to shrink the others?
The through lanes are going to shrink down to, I want to say 11, and the turn lanes are going to be 10 foot.
Plenty wide enough.
It's travel law.
Why do the lanes, the faster people go?
I mean, the thing is, the thing is now, PennDOT does look for those types of, I mean, that's the idea that PennDOT does now, when they have big wide, you know, they, they're going down to 10 foot lanes to try to save space, to reduce their widening, you know, instead of widening and making 12 foot lanes when you got to widen out, especially some of those projects we just looked at, like the one up by the gas station up here, those